Great.
All right, let's call it an order, the July fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the board of supervisors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. So before we proceed any further, there has been one small change to the agenda this evening, so I'd like to entertain a motion to go forward with the revised agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to amend the agenda at item six H, motion to accept bids for police vehicle sixty-one dash three.
Second. Move then second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. We'll move forward with the revised agenda. Uh, this opens our first discussion period if anyone in the audience wishes to be recognized. It's your name and address for the
The whole thing, so Brian Fallon. Four, four, six Tyson Road. Oh, South, itself. Uh, I've been a resident here since I think oh eight. Love the neighborhood. Don't like how it's changed. Unfortunately, I've had an issue, an ongoing issue this year that I documented to the township regarding well, so it's a declaration of nuisance. Uh, there's risk exploring this tile of property. I'm waiting for something to happen. I don't know who to talk to here. I already emailed the correspondence with this Rhyma. She's here, but I'm just frustrated. You guys have the ability to do something about this. And nothing's being done. We've been waiting. I've been waiting for a month. No, we're in this township. I get it. I've worked for a nonprofit. It could take a whole year to do something. Uh, but my point is that the property's a mess. It looks abandoned. I now know that there's people walking the property. So I documented issues before I knew that there were people walking the property about squatters. So the issue is at four, seven, eight Tyson Road. If you'd like to see a picture, I've got pictures here. Unfortunately, now what I have to deal with is an increased predation. I've got a ton of hawks now. But granted, if you like hawks, come to Tyson with them. I just stole a fifth one. So they're not family. They're all different. But we've got fox now with fox. We've got a lot more things, skunks. I can't say it's because of this property. But I've got five deer now with babies. Literally, I just took a picture before I came here of them on that property. I've had issues with Lyme disease in the past. This is a public health hazard, even as identified in your ordinance. So I ask that this this be addressed. I don't care how it's addressed. But I'd like it to be addressed. I'd also like, in addition, something to be done. I didn't see any ordinances about abandoned homes. This home has been abandoned. There's nobody living here. So again, I don't, I didn't see anything in the ordinances. I don't know if you're gonna do anything about it, but I'd like to see something done. I know that in other townships there are ordinances about abandoned homes. And I know that nobody's living there.
Do you know, is it a, just as a further information, uh, have you understood to be a mortgage foreclosure issue? Is a bank, does it, so the bank is the one Okay.
So it is violate notice about the issue of high grass property.
This, this is a property, uh, kind of across from the farmhouses. Right? Because I did pass there and it was a, uh, I noticed the mailbox. It was like twelve years with a mailbox, the mail laying all over the ground.
Correct.
So, okay. How long?
We tried it. I know exactly. We had this problem with the house in front of mine over on Castle Room for a while. We had a very similar problem. And I know, how many notices do we have to give before we cut it and just assess the property under just sort of approval bill?
I mean, we've had that situation many other townships and, uh, basically if they ignore you go in, do the work, charge the work, lean property and
Perfect.
That's, you know, but that's, that's a quick solution.
Yeah, that's all I'm, that's all I'm asking.
Well, no, I, I
They came in, they did fifty percent of the work. So somebody did, they did cut it.
They did a bare minimum.
Can I approach?
Sure.
Just respectfully, I mean, all friends here.
Well, hey, I, I, I respect.
Mike, if you just refer of
Oh, yeah.
We need to address the bank.
Yeah, again, I look at it as a resident. Yeah, I don't care about the parks. I mean, I get, I don't
But either that, being there right away is another thing, though it doesn't get over.
There was a fire. I mean, I know that there, there was a fire. I'm concerned because if that goes my neighbor's house could I, not that I'm gonna be in trouble, but that's a mess.
Mr. Brown, thank you for your time, Mr. Brown. I agree with my colleagues and, you know, I know the staff is really diligent on checking into that, so I'm glad we did definitely follow those back. We, you know, we will need a little bit of time because I'll have to send a certified mail notice to the to the bank. This is not the first time this has happened. And, uh, uh, assuming the bank bought it in, sure, if um, and then when they don't reply to that notice, then we'll take care of it.
And we'll continue to call the places as we're observing people on the property.
Yeah. And Mike, can we just make sure we follow up with Mr. Brown when these steps are taken, just so he knows the steps are being taken? But Patty has, that way at least he's not sitting there wondering if it's happened. Yeah.
If you made it safe to, like, those, those kinds of places, uh, always catch fire. Okay, so if we can, make sure it's in excess.
Sometimes even when the grass is spout, those places catch fire.
Yep. If you'd like to send pictures to our emails or on the website or hang around after the meeting abroad, be happy to look out.
And this Rhym has some of those pictures.
Okay, we'll make sure we get them as well. Thank you for your time, sir.
All right, anyone else wish to be recognized? Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, moving on to the consent agenda item is listed on the, uh, agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
So move.
Second.
Move then second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Committee reports, Mr. Bukey, voting hearing board. There are no applications. There's no colleagues tonight, show, are you going to stand there or?
There's, there's, there are no park board meetings for July and August.
Right. Very good. Simple enough. Fire chief.
Sir, for the month of June.
Let's not go so far. It's not really a fire.
I know.
But he stood, he stood up so
Uh, for the month of June, we did thirty-four calls, uh, twenty-five during the day, nine at night. We had ten fireworks, four building fire non-mercy. Four EMS assists. Three wood slat fuel fires. Two unglued fire. Uh, one fluid on highway, roadway. Um, one gas odor slash leak inside us. One helicopter landing and one officer investigation. Twenty-two of those calls were lower south or three of them were in Francoria. One in Marlboro and one up for south. We received mutually four times and provided four times as well. And we totaled, uh, two hundred eighty-three firefighter responses averaging ten point five firefighters per call with a total of fifteen hours, thirteen minutes and eighteen seconds service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very busy. All right, Freedom Valley Medial Rescue. No one's here tonight. We'll have their report. The township for public view to the center. Anyone who's interested. Communications Committee, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sure. Communications Committee recently gave a review, adding a texting service for the township to utilize to the board. I brought back the comments and suggestions the board had for the committee, particularly that the board would need to see significant use for the service before investing. Township reached out to our web host as well as Ready Monaco so that we can properly see what capabilities we currently have and compare them to services and report back to you. This month's, uh, businesses in our township should receive our township quick reference guide with QR codes to our website. We hope the businesses will consider displaying these to offer customers and residents and other means of connecting with our township. Our next meeting is July nineteenth here at the township building and on Zoom, we encourage township residents and business centers to attend.
Excellent. Thanks for working on a texting project. Committee work. Thank you.
Which reminds me, the upcoming meetings for the various committees are listed at the bottom of the agenda in the event anyone would like to attend. Uh, Recreation Authority. Uh, I have the numbers through May and, um, as the prior several months, the golf course is doing exceedingly well. Uh, through the end of May, the, uh, just to give you an idea that the number of rounds, twelve thousand seven, where we had budgeted nine thousand six hundred, so twenty-four hundred to the good. And when you have that kind of play, the financials follow, so all is well with the golf course.
How did it survive that driest, uh,
Not
Month on record?
Not, not a problem.
Very good.
Plenty of water.
Very good.
They're all good. All right, moving on. Unfinished business. Uh, item A, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh three authorization to exit. Authorizing, authorizing execution, the cable franchise agreement between the township and Verizon, Pennsylvania, consideration to adopt. So we're looking for a motion to adopt that ordinance.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to authorize the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh three.
Second. Move then second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. I just have it. Next up, item B, three fifty-five Maple Avenue. Uh, revised plan showing conversion of courtyard to the building.
Good evening.
Hello there.
Kristen Piantio from Hamburg, Ruben Mullin, Maxwell Lupin. If you remember, in April, we were here before you and were granted preliminary slash final land development approval. Uh, since that time, plans have been revised and resubmitted pursuant to that resolution and the review letters. Uh, it became apparent that the graphic that we showed you during those meetings showed the courtyard still being empty as it is today in the center of the building. Uh, although the building coverage and impervious coverages took into account the filling of the middle of the building, we call it the donut hole. The graphic did not reflect that, so we were asked to come here tonight as a courtesy and share that information with you.
Clarification. I should point out too, and then maybe the most important point is no approval has been recorded, so we're, we still have a chance to fix this before any
But the plan that gets recorded will accurately reflect the picture that meets up with the detail on the plan.
Correct.
Are they planning to put the office space there or the more warehouse space?
Um, there's a breakdown in the revised plan of assembly, storage, office. So there are renovations being made to the interior where about thirty-five thousand square feet will be lost as far as square footage because they're opening up, uh, the, the ceiling height, so the building square footage is actually getting smaller, notwithstanding the filling in the donut.
That was two-story space going in one-story.
So right, right. I just wanted to make sure how much, like, what, what section that was in there, the spaces of that.
I, I couldn't tell you offhand, but it's
That's gonna be just then.
Okay.
The shelf is ready to go now? Because I saw your letter. And it's already been approved, so this is like the step between approval and recording.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an update and so we now know exactly what's going on. There's no action required. It's just that the plan that is to be reported will be more accurate and clear. We, we take this up and maybe even consider more with our trails. Where do we stand on that or possibly consider not leaving the preliminary final and it's still up there?
We already have preliminary final.
There already is approval. And it's already conditioned and they're complying with the condition and as a courtesy, they were asked to come here and show you that the hole in the donut is being filled. Which the plans anticipated, except one plan did not because it showed it as, uh, not as a building, basically just correct plan that they submitted later. Correct.
And I think the, the trail situation, my understanding is you receive parking, park board feedback, planning commission feedback, and it's going to the trail committee in the end of July for review and discussion, feedback, and then coming to us eventually, but that will be secured so that it will get built in so, in the format fashion that we end up arriving at per the developer's group.
Yes, the approval resolution set out a series of events for the trail approval. Trail committee is July thirty-first, seven PM here, and then we come back to the supervisors for your review and approval, so that's underway.
Do you hope, I do hope you follow up with the trail things as well, because what you told us last time was different information that we received on that one site meeting, so that's why I'm trying to caution going things that are not writing.
It, it is in writing. It's in the approval resolution.
I understand, but, uh, you did tell me that the trails would be connected and I was told otherwise that there's no, nobody else's connection to the public.
Well, we'll see you back after we've been to the trail committee for your review and approval of that. Okay, great. Thank you. Sure. Have a good summer.
Next up, under unfinished business will be five C. Smile, Drakus, Kemp, Access Drive, Motion to authorize our friends in the CKS to prepare an estimate and plan for those connection improvements. Think we have a graphic too, Michael?
We do. We break that up.
Mike shows there is a, what did show there? Catch that shows the interconnection and plans with the, um, approvals of this smile, Drake is the bank developments. Um, we were asked to, um, anticipate the cost of design, which we are, um, stating to you tonight will be, uh, seventeen thousand dollars.
And it's anticipated that that, uh, proposed driveway connection will generally align with some of the improvements that are out there?
Yes, absolutely. It was always planned, and in fact, that, that I think is the easement that is already in place over those three properties, so the driveway will be within that easement.
We did the easement three or four years ago, I think.
Right.
Questions, a couple of questions. Were the approvals, I mean, I, and I remember these, but not as well as you all do, that I know we are gathering the easements and the ability to do this at some point in the future. Were the approvals also requiring them to install the improvement as a matter of each of those?
I believe that they do.
That the approvals also have to be allocated
Right.
To properties and that's
Okay.
The work part of this.
And then the second part is I only see in yellow the lane out to Ruth Road, basically from, um, the dentist. Are we forcing them or is there any movement to abandon then the accesses to Main Street or limiting those accesses to write in, write out as part of this project as well? Yeah.
For the different part of their approval required, this interconnection is done, that they eliminate the left turn out of their drive.
Okay, right in, right out, but what about, uh, Drake?
Some discussion of that traffic engineer do that, that turning on Main Street that left in from the street. Building
Okay. But not a left out. What about Drake is?
Drake is, I don't believe there's any they changed the driveway. To give it left turns out.
So the only other question would be in design. If there's a connection, you know, both those connections. Is there going to be anything that we think through just to prevent any cut through traffic for these people from coming down Ruth Road and cutting through those so they avoid the light at the intersection? If they're, especially they're going west on Main Street. Yeah, I think just something to consider as we're
Think the best we're going to be able to do is signage.
Signage or even speed, speed humps or cables or something like that, just to make it a less attractive route for a cut through versus someone who's utilizing the businesses.
Gotcha. Is this a route also planned? Is the plan to also be utilized by other businesses out there that we were saying as well, there's other each property? I know these properties, but in addition to these, and they, we anticipate other businesses to take this exit on to.
These were the three properties that were planned years before, over a decade.
But we could eventually the next property down, which would be in between that and the, um, extension of Ford Road. If you tie that in, then we get a secondary access along that whole set of businesses.
When we looked at this, the planning commission fifteen, twenty years the driveway that goes, I'm gonna say northerly through the property there towards I guess that's, yeah, right there.
Right.
That was anticipated as a potential connection to the next property to eliminate the driver. FYI. Now, whether or not that ever comes to fruition.
It did not make it on the final proof plan.
Well, that property hasn't been in.
But there, there's no existing easement.
Oh, no. I thought we got blanket easements.
I totally do too.
So that's the easement that's shown in yellow.
We should check.
I think we did.
I'm pretty sure we did.
I think we got a blanket on.
For that reason. Because we didn't know necessarily if that was going to be the right location.
Right.
Me.
Okay.
I would actually have more concerns, I think, if it was connected to further businesses, but knowing, you know, how much use to come out of whatnot, how the fact that would be something that we want to see, so I feel a little better. That would just be those.
That's all that's approved right now.
Right, yes, well, I can start that as well, thank you. To prevent left turns on Main. That was the main impetus. Just for the general public, this is going to be not any township financial burden. Right.
With the exception of plan, the the initial outlet.
The initial outlet.
Townships uh, lift on this, it's the plan.
And make a motion to authorize the CKS engineers to per the estimate and plan per the vote provided by Shell.
I second. Move then second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. She carries. Five D, MS four update and progress report from Mist Fountain.
Settling.
For a long time. Go ahead, I should, uh, Red Bull, no.
So, um, you, we are required to give you an update every year on the progress being made in the part of your MS four stormwater permit. Um, your MS four stormwater permit was issued on October first, twenty twenty-one. It's a five-year permit. So it expires in, on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. There's three parts of your permit. Uh, the six minimum control measures, pollution reduction plan and pollution control measures. The six minimum control measures have been in effect since two thousand and three, so, um, you should know them, but there's newer supervisors on the boards. They are public education, public participation, illicit discharge, detection and elimination. Host construction, stormwater control, um, site control during development and, um, municipal training and education. Those six minimum control measures, you have to get goals for each one of them, and as I said, it's, they've been in place, uh, for the last twenty years. The second part of your permit is a pollution reduction plan, and that is where we are doing, um, the township is doing BMPs to reduce the amount of sediment that is going into the stream. The DEP allowed the township to say they were, if they were reducing ten percent of the required amount of sediment, they would also reduce the five percent of the amount of phosphorus. You have three different tributaries in the township. They are the Skipback Creek Watershed and for that, uh, watershed, we are planning. And, and it's in the pollution reduction plan that is, has been improved by DEP. Basin conversions at, uh, Alderford Park, Park Avenue, Alderford Road, Stormfield Drive, stream restoration and floodplain reconnection at Jacob Reef Park. A thousand linear feet of stream restoration and then an additional two hundred feet of addition of, of stream restoration. Park Avenue and Alderford Road basin versions are being completed right now. Uh, the stream restoration at Jacob Reef Park is already been done with the great help from the Kirkiamon watershed um, conservancy, hundred feet of stream restoration, Long Friends Road is already done by a developer. So there's a couple, uh, basin conversions to do and two hundred feet of additional stream, stream restoration. However, you all approved, um, us to work with the Kirkiamon watershed conservancy again for the Jacob Reef Park project two, we're calling it. And hopefully that grant is awarded and we can go ahead with that project. That'll take care of the two hundred feet of stream restoration that we have to do. Indian Creek Watershed. I know Chris is looking at me. I'm not talking about TNT. Here's the pollution reduction plan. We are planning to do the new bio retention rain garden facility at the community park, which, um, we are, we're going to get a grant for that. And we have to do three hundred, um, some odd feet of stream restoration along that area. We have a lot of township land in that area, however, it might be difficult to do stream restoration. And this work has to be done by the end of the permit period, by the end, by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And the last one is the unnamed tributaries of the Kirkiamon Creek Watershed, that is by the golf course. So this is the easiest one, um, to meet and because we're just gonna enhance and maintain the existing riparian buffers, uh, along that area. The last part of your permit is the pollution control measures. In addition to the sediment nutrient impairments, the East Branch perk is impaired for pathogens. Pathogens is basically people call. So by next year, reporting period of next year, we have to identify put, uh, possible locations of these pathogens, and then by the following year, we have to investigate to see if there are any impairments. And that's a basic snapshot of your permit.
Thank you.
Any other progress? Any question?
Those who haven't visited the, uh, the project at CKS and the Kirkiamon watershed, we're together at the township, David Rice is quite nice, growing in well and, uh, it's amazing how it works during the storm events. It goes right up, fills right in and disappears though.
We like them. All right.
Thank Michelle.
Thank Michelle. Uh, one more under unfinished business, five E, the Indian Valley Faith Fellowship waiver of maintenance bond. We all received a letter. The same.
I would agree to waive the eighteen-month maintenance bond as this has been going on for several years. They completed all their work many, many years ago. Just waiting on their NFP from the conservation district, so I'm happy to see if they've gotten it. I'd be happy to make a motion to waive the maintenance bond.
Move then second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. All right.
Welcome.
Good night. Uh, new business. Moving on to, uh, six A, resolution number twenty twenty-two, that twenty-two authorized the submission of a grant application for the twenty twenty-three round of the county transportation program. This would seek funds to perform improvements at Harleyville Pike Maple Avenue Paterno Drive would encompass a traffic signal installation.
Do we have any, uh, I know I, I did ask earlier, but I wasn't able to today. Any kind of report, what the study has been, as this merited a safety issue. I know when we discussed that, we discussed pedestrian crossing, which I agree, you know, we do cross up there regularly. Um, however, um, another thing to consider, I know a couple of residents, actually two people at our letter up, walkable study, vulnerability study, I think, one, they've supervisor churned with me when somebody asked, you know, do we need one there? Is it something that's just for crosswalking? Is it something we could do shorter? And then we have a brand opportunity, but I feel that that's still a lot of money if it doesn't officially merit it. I, uh, did some unofficial driving around myself there, really, since we've had discussions and started timing, the kids have done the same. I don't think I sat there for another forty seconds at any point of that.
Well, just to understand, the way it works is the manual uniform traffic control device includes, which is adopted by the state of Pennsylvania, uh, eight different warrants, um, and they include, uh, various topics like accident histories. Vol- volumes and various volume characteristics are several others. Um, so it's not just the Um, so it's not just the. A driving perception, it's a traffic count and analysis that's done at the intersection specifically uh based on. Times of day, so. That analysis has been done, was done some time ago. Stephanie should be able to. It's basically what's called a warrant analysis to determine whether or not traffic section is actually warranted at that location. And it meets the warrants for.
It definitely needs, I mean, obviously for safety issues, that's something I go, you know, we don't object to, we try to make work what we can, I know we discussed this a few years ago.
Right.
We didn't get the grant approval, but in that time. Anyway, COVID, you know, major like on, I don't. Not sure if it's a safe study. It just proof of thought, if it's definitely, yes, we need this, absolutely.
I believe when Metropolitan did their traffic study for their, it also stated that was warranted, but it was warranted and they contributed towards that because. They had the impact on that intersection, but it was warranted prior to the development traffic that came out of there. So I think that was basically. Uh, updated warrant.
Correct, and what happens is you, once you complete the warrant analysis as an engineer, you submit that to. The Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, they actually say, yes, we agree or no, we don't. They won't give us that thumbs up, thumbs down, until we actually have the money to install, because what that does is creates liability that. On us, because now you've got a condition that warrants, right, the traffic signal, and you're failing to put it in, so it becomes very problematic.
If it warrants it, absolutely, I have, you know, it is not be that.
File, curious, what about, my question is, what about the rest of the roads going down thirteen, they don't warrant it? Like all other intersections.
I I I didn't cover parents for a quiz on all of those.
Thirteen.
I understand.
This one add for in multiple reasons.
Listen, and just because we get the grant doesn't necessarily mean. Have to move forward with it, this is more, can we get the money to build the signal and then. Whether we choose to use that money to build a signal or turn down the grant, that's a decision we can make at that time. But if you don't ask for the money, you're not going to get it. This is the, this is the position here. We are.
Make a good point, we don't have to accept it when it does come, I mean, and then that's a hundred sixty two thousand in that time, it'd be good to see some of those reports. I do, uh, I'm curious what it's to brush, it said to me, you know, other areas, well, sure. But uh. Yeah, I'd be curious to see that quite there as well, um, every once in a while. I do, uh. And again, I think if it's something you made a good point to about crossing pedestrian crossing, again, I live further up the road, we cross when it's safe, you know, we drive there's with all the kids, but. But we do, you know, and if it's something that, you know, that's a concern, that's something we want to do, we could perhaps. Uh, land this where we already have a lot, see what kind of options we have there as well, so.
Well, this is the topic from the pedestrian aspect to bring up. We can explore, we got trails coming from different directions to the various parts to that intersection, so it's something to talk.
I think a motion uh to approve resolution twenty twenty three twenty two. Authorizing the submission of grant application for the twenty twenty three round of the county transportation program.
One more question, if we do get this approved, we still again have to. Vote to approve correct, accept, or is that considered accepted? None, not a, not just write the grant application, then you still have to kind of sign the contract.
Right, we have another resident. And we'd have to authorize putting on the bid and all that, there's like five steps to go before we'd actually go to building traffic.
Thank you.
Of course. Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both say nay. Let's have.
Thank you for discussing.
Six B, resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty three, acceptance of Waverly Lane and Alice Lane. For the Rittenhouse Track Development. I don't know if there's any.
Assuming this is ready, Michelle.
This is already certified, the project is clean and accept a maintenance bond for the.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three twenty three. Definitely Waverly Lane and Alice Lane.
All sex, moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Ice have it. Six C, acceptance of bills of sale, Rittenhouse Track Stormwater, Storm Sewer Pipes. Six fourteen, Westborne and relocated township. So this is improvements, I guess, that were done by.
Right, I guess. Curiously, so the, are they all on private property? Okay, so they're not in either the, the nonpublic right away of Westmore. Okay. Okay, and now we have a. New easement.
Yeah.
And has that been accepted somewhere already that even? Next up. Well, a bill of sale. Typically is just for that. Facility. There was an easement recorded between the developer and the property owner and that either signed, has that been assigned to us? And that'll be us, and the assignment in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Dog, sort of make sure. Great thing we get the pipe, we're gonna get the ground that we can access. Exactly, so I make a motion to accept the bill of sale.
Second, moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Ocean carries. Six D, maintenance agreement for the Rittenhouse Track Development. This will be to maintain those, those very same facilities.
I'm just gonna ask a question, but it does not cover the even transfer. Was the even that was got relocated. Written in such a way that we do end up with rights to that. I I know this is my own business, typically I get easements in my development name. And we have it with product property owner, we do the installation and that even has to be transferred over to. The entity that's in charge, usually it's our homeowners association, but all the time it'll also be a municipal government. Entity, so I would just ask someone to check on that, just so we make sure that there isn't. Twenty years down the road, we have to go in there and try to access it and then there's. We did run into that sewer authority a couple of years ago, I was still on that, so just.
And this is a maintenance agreement for those two roads, also, I.
Yeah.
To make the the two roads is going to be the town to be dedicated to.
Correct, but there's a main, it says maintenance agreement for the Rittenhouse Track Development, part of which is a dedication to roads.
The great, great house. So what are you asking?
That there, that the eighteen. Um.
Oh.
Maintenance. Includes includes the roads.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good.
Make a motion to approve the maintenance agreement.
Second, and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Ocean carries, six E, Trail Easement Agreement between Rose Cliff Manor and Borisalford Township. Authorization to execute said agreement.
So definitely, make a motion to approve the trail even agreement.
Second, moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say nay? She carries. Six F, one hundred Christopher Lane BBC Machines Waiver of Land Development Request.
Good evening. This is identical to what's on the board, um. So one hundred Christopher Lane, um. Uh, was originally uh constructed. After the subdivision that created. Christopher Lane and the industrial lots that surround it was approved. Originally, it was uh constructed for Branch Valley Builders. Uh, Branch Valley. Close their doors for whatever reason. Uh, Beck Machine has long been a business into township, in fact, I did a land development plan for them. Twenty five or more years ago, um, and their location is over on Stall Road, Stall and Ruth Road come together. Before we go too much further, I want to introduce Peter Kurzina. Uh. Operating manager from Beck Machines, um, so Beck has been in the township for a long time, when this property became available, their need to expand. Um, Earl Bolger. Who was uh the owner of Beck Machines at the time, uh acquired the property. Moved their business into this location, uh but also kept the uh Stall Road location. Uh, continued to uh have success. Um. And around two thousand seventeen, it's got some history which I want to go through. Um, a waiver of land development was requested to build the garage, six hundred sixteen square feet that's located at the end of the parking lot. That waiver was granted. Uh, it. Sat dormant for a while. Two thousand nineteen, there was some buttoning up of the plan, some review comments that needed to be addressed. Those were addressed, everything was approved, but still nothing happened. Then COVID hit. And changed a lot of things for the business. In the intervening time, another step that was taken, because at the time they had a need for some additional parking. We went in front of the zoning hearing board and obtained a special exception to construct six additional spaces. Between the building. And Christopher Lane, and if you're familiar with the zoning ordinance, the industrial district, you're only allowed to have ten percent of your parking. Within that area between the building and Christopher Lane. The six additional spaces would have increased it above ten percent. That special exception was granted by the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
With the condition that it be affected within a year. Again, that was not constructed, there was too much uncertainty going on. In the world, really, um, so it was, it never came to fruition. Since that time, Earl Bolger, previously the owner of Beck Machines, sold the business, it's still remaining in the township. Um. Earl, at the moment, still owns the property, however, I think the future plans is to sell the property as well to the same. Uh, individuals that own the business, um. The six additional parking spaces. Are no longer necessary, so that's been taken off the plan. We would have, I believe, had to go, go back before the zoning hearing board to. Uh, get that reapproved or somehow. Extended to allow it, but. At this point, there's no need, um. For what's proposed, or today, we are proposing uh to just re-stripe a parking area so that we accommodate the parking needs. Without having the need to add additional previous cover. Um. After talking this through uh with everyone involved. The other thing that's occurred uh is the need for the garage, although it's remained on the plan because it was part of the. Previous uh waiver of land development. Has has dissipated, and particularly with the proposal of the additional twenty one hundred, twenty eight hundred square foot addition that's. At the rear of the industrial building. So in order to reduce the scope of the request, I think uh tonight. Uh, we would be willing to accept as a condition. That the garage not be built as part of this waiver of land development. However. The twenty eight hundred square foot addition to the industrial building. Um, is is kind of a desperate need at this point in the way the business is operating, in fact, and now they're forced to either. Truck materials back and forth, install road in this property. And the other thing they are doing on a daily basis is they take materials out of the building. Place it in the parking lot so they can free up space inside the building and reverse that at the end of every business day, so it's. It's a problematic situation in terms of. Uh, the efficiency of how the business operates and how they need to use it today. Uh, so it's created sort of a desperate situation, um. So what we're really asking for is the twenty eight hundred square foot addition. Uh, on the rear of the building, um. And, you know, I think what sets this property different from maybe some other applications is it's already been through, um. Previous land development process where. All of the issues surrounding land development have more or less been considered as part of what's already there on the site. Where the stormwater management is located, uh, the path network, there's actually a portion of the township path network that runs through the rear of this property. There's a portion of the network that runs parallel to the property within the neighboring tract. Um, the access, uh. Where the parking is situated, I mentioned that we're not adding any additional parking, uh, I'm sorry, paving to accommodate the parking. So all of those issues have already been hashed out. One of them is. The need for additional buffering, that we have residential properties in the rear. And when the original structure was built, there was additional required per the zoning ordinance. A more substantial buffer. Be installed, um. When the waiver request was made for the garage, we did verify that. With the engineer, that it still existed, they go back there today, you can't even see beyond this property, it's very dense. But we, and that is commented in Michelle's letter, so we would be happy to work with her. To verify that buffering is still, still meets those additional buffering requirements, um. The materials of the building itself will match exactly what's there today, so if you're looking at the rear of the building. Towards. What's there today, basically the appearance is gonna be the same, it's gonna be the. The same height or lower, because the roof continues to slope and it's gonna be the same materials, um, used for the, for the building itself. Um, it's already served by public water, public sewer. It is basically just a a warehousing uh use inside the building, so uh. It's not really gonna generate, um. Additional sewage flow, but we can get. Verify that with the sewer authority. That's it, um, if you have any questions.
Very good, one of the things going, Michelle. It appears that you're building it within the stormwater basin, here to comment on that.
It, and it's kind of a optical vision, we are not.
Optical.
We are not building it within the limits of the stormwater management area. Because of the slope, it would appear that is part of the basin, but if you look at what's already there to the right. We're basically at the same elevation, so we're above the high water line of. Of the basin, so we're not in.
Which contour?
Two, I can answer that, two ninety six. Is what I was mostly concerned with and I was, um, specifically for the garage. Now that the garage is not gonna be part of this development, I'm not as concerned. I still like them show grade, of course, approved to it, but.
Yeah, and I did want to comment on that, so this building will be constructed like the section to the right is, where it's will conform to the grade that's out there, so. We'll add spot elevations, but. Actually, there will be no change in grade around that building. Building will follow the existing slope like it does on the right. So it's not like we're gonna have to fill behind this building and potentially impact the basin, but we'll add the spot elevations.
So it's gonna be slab on grade, there's no basement.
Correct, just exposed, except wall, and and it'll be filling up to the slide, right? That's correct. Does this, uh, with the waiver, Mike, does this trigger land development? According to the ways proposed to you? That this is, what are your thoughts?
Traditionally, this is the path that, that uh. Developer or property when they're rotating or. Or whether or not.
Uh. Is there any uh requirements for setbacks from a basin for buildings?
No.
Like a twenty five or fifty foot setback, okay.
Um, the other thing I would offer out there is, is that there's any concern that, you know, this will be a piecemeal process or something like that. We'd be willing to accept the condition that any further alteration on the property. Would trigger a land development automatically, kind of rule out coming back every year for another piece.
Yeah.
Of the building.
I like that, Rick, you read my mind.
I have that feeling. I think, uh, I think that, I appreciate where you're coming from, I appreciate Mr. Cartina's situation, but I think I'd like to see this go through land development. Big size, just a double check with the, they kind of. And just to get a check with any kind of stormwater, and you know, I appreciate, I see some of the buffering here, and then I'd like to, I'd just like to see it go through. Landville.
If, if, if I, if I, if I may, if, if I thought that going through the land development process and going back through. Planning Commission. The other approval process would garner something different on the property, I would agree. The, the, the. The exception I'm seeing here is that it's already been through that process, so we've got our trail, we've got, you know, stormwater management. Improvements on the site. You know, public water, public sewer, so I'm not, I guess, I'm not as concerned because we've already got those things on the property. If, if uh something, you know, if I thought something might be lacking, you know, they're gonna have to. Address Michelle's letter, right, whatever, whatever needs there are there, you know. The increase square footage may necessitate additional. Traffic impact fees, right, another fee, so I, I. I'm just not, I'm just not, uh, sold that it has to go back through. You know, for something like this, now, if if they come back in. Sending them through land development for something, I think that's a great condition.
As I mentioned, you'd accept the condition, just. This point produces the scope and it work, at this point, it's been as. Needed as we thought arisen.
So with the removal of the garage, then that stormwater. System that goes through there is not gonna be relocated.
No reconfiguration. Probably the world's most expensive garage, actually.
Uh, any other thoughts?
We're not worried about uh purvey surface ratios or anything like that, we're all good under, under the radar there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I I have one question for you, the comment number two. I, I have one question for you though. Comment number two in my letter that talked about the. Uh, outdoor, uh, trash disposal area. It, your current ordinance, uh, requires that to be within the setback. It's an existing nonperformance, it's outside of the setback. So I asked in that comment if you want them to relocate that trash disposal area inside the building setback. Or if it can remain here this. Like, could you want?
Yeah.
And then be done.
It can be. So we would agree to comply with that, if that needs to be moved. I don't know the history of that dumpster, how it per, why it ended up there. Uh, but two things, uh, you can see there's gaps.
With the trash truck pull into it.
Right.
Now, and to be honest with how we described their using the property, that was the only spot left over probably, but, um, there is ability to move it.
But we'll say if you want to move it, the property to the, that's the west of it, right? The west, I, I can tell. Is, uh, another industrial great property where if you move it down to where maybe the garage is, that's residential properties on that side. Although you said it's plenty buffer.
We likely move it against.
Are you suggesting that it's better off leaving in right front?
Where, where would you suggest, where, where would you think you'd move it to?
We would likely move it against building where. Right in there, along those parking spaces. With removal of the garage, we probably can.
Yeah, you park space. Now removing part of space, talking with Peter, we feel we have enough adequate work to put in between those spaces. So we think we can resolve it either way.
It would be ideal to get it out.
So that would be a welcome.
If you, um, are aligned, I would suggest that, uh, the existing vegetation may be allowed. To remain if it meets the buffer requirements as determined by the township staff.
Wonderful.
For me, that works for that.
Well, again, I appreciate the additional, I appreciate the additional, uh, conditions, but, uh, I'm feeling more comfortable letting this go. Particularly, I mean, every letter was stated today as well. More time to look into it. I'd rather. Do that. I do appreciate the conditions that it's going that direction.
All right, so. I would make a motion that we go ahead and waive land development approval. Uh, subject to the various comments made this evening. Uh, adherence to, uh, Michelle's letter. Moving the dumpster out of the setback. And verification, obviously, the buffers with township staff. And removing the garage from the plans.
And any future projects with required land development.
What do you say?
And, and I have one more.
Hit me.
And that the work proposed to be done under the plan, um, be secured in some manner satisfactory to the township.
That's acceptable.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. All right, seven.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for adapting our community.
All right. Six G. Construction equipment rental contract prevailing wage, authorization to advertise. Julie, you might want to get so.
Sorry. As you call it last year, we went through the process and last year that was. Uh, result of the township getting the FEMA money for the. Repair of coverage on Sturgis Road. That project has. Moved very slowly because the E P permitting process. So we actually haven't got to it under the previously approved bid specifications for the rental and operator. Use, I did put a copy of last year's, uh, send one out to you today of last year's, uh, bit. So. Uh, in addition to the Sturgis Road project, which, which these got under prevailing wage. The Cobra Road project also got prevailing wage, so. Both of those projects will be done using these bid specifications for this, uh. Make a move. Make a motion to alter right the other guy.
I'll say, move then seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Motion carries. Six H, motion to accept bids for police vehicle sixty one dash three. That leave is a twenty eighteen. Fourth interceptor?
Yes. Floor.
Floor, sorry. Eighty six fifty five, if I've got that number correct.
Definitely, uh, the winning bidder was Kevin Blaine. Of, uh, K and R Auto Sales in Quaker Town.
We're anxious to accept his chat.
Make a motion to accept the bid and it's a no, get back.
Move second. The second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. She carries. This is the point in our agenda where we have a second discussion period if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to be there.
I did want to note too, although we left, I'm not too embarrassed for that. We had a young boy scout attending meeting. He is, he should have his Eagle Scout about two months.
Very nice.
Yep.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Shkowsky, do we have need for an executive session this evening?
No, Mr. Jerry.
We do not. With that. I would look for, for Gary. Or you two.
Motion to adjourn.
Got cycle. As they said.